Wants to close the door or not?
Too late.
No.
She's looking. Close to Kensington.
Down near the river area.
Um, actually, she lives in, oh, no. No, she lives. Well, yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay. George is in the building. Okay, he's in the building, he's not remote tonight. I'm wanting to get there.
But there's some particular.
Take some of them when we're ready to get in. Well, you should be here, um, Leanne has another meeting, so she's gonna do that one first, cause it started at six thirty, and she's gonna dash over here. Dash him.
Do we have a call? Six.
Seven, yes we do.
Okay, so I can see.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, uh, welcome to the October twentieth, uh, meeting for the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board of Trustees. This is a regular meeting, so we're done with all our special meetings from last month. Uh, I'll turn it over to, um, Elizabeth to do a roll call.
George Bernako.
Yeah.
Kelly DeHawes.
Here.
Jason Hip. Hannah Eddy. Pam Canary.
Here.
Pauline Crowe. Iris Larson. Leanne Mankey.
Maureen. She would come later.
Call later. Maureen O'Farrell Lyons.
Here.
Chris Rugg. Christine Chushen.
Yeah.
Diane Sam.
Here.
Lisa Mastin.
Here.
Here.
Karen Dunner.
Here.
Sheila Raul.
Here.
David Nagle.
Yeah.
And Kim Rada. That includes all.
Great. Would you, would this be Anna's official last meeting? Hey, Ian. So now too late. I was preparing for the meeting that you were gonna cash in later, so.
No.
So according to, um, Maureen, to answer your question, um, when I look at the goal that says, you know, to be renewed on ten twenty-five, so either it is her last meeting or she's off after this meeting, so. This term expires ten twenty-five, so. Okay, thank you for doing the roll call, um, we'll move to public participation, is there anybody online for public participation? Nope. Anyone in the room? No? Uh, town council liaison, Dave?
Um, there's nothing specifically related to the library that has happened, uh, in terms of the town council. That'll make you breathe to death.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that, uh, secretary's report, George. You moved. It was like, wait a minute, if he was just at the end of the table. Okay, thank you, no report. Um, approval of the minutes from last month. Any discussion? Change this update?
It would this be the part where I was, I spoke to the library director before, they had a couple of titles in it, but I wasn't sure if that comes later.
Um, we could talk about it now.
Okay. What I noticed when it was sent out, the one for September, uh, uh, two thousand twenty-five, on page two, the first full bullet, um, and total circulation was twenty-two comma seventy-two. I guess whether there's another number that's missing.
If it's possible, so let's just check that number for circulation for last month.
Then there was also a typo for staff processed and pulled two comma, two-two-two-one holes. When the commas are probably in the wrong spot. And then the ancestry dot com looked like it was miss. It was like NS, that's great. Um, and the only other one that I had was in the August two thousand twenty-five library director's report on page one and the third bullet. And I kind of got a chuckle out of it, it was about the STEM grant for, uh, the trial.
Yes, it does.
So, I didn't think I ran it, but. No, that was, that was all I had.
So those were from the director's report. One more question about the board minutes for last month, and this would have been the, um, regular board meeting, any updates of changes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Maureen.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
George, thank you. All those in favor? Most? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, review of the annual activities calendar this year, it's turning into be quite a special year, uh, because we have a couple of folks on our board that are also, uh, running for elections, and our elections won't happen yet, so we don't really know who our board members are going to be going forward, so for this month and next month, um, consider yourself there and members of whatever, um, committees you're on currently, we also have, um, some names that have been forwarded to PEP committee, three names, which is great. Um, so we'll be looking to get those interviews done very quickly, so that we can, um, fill in, because we do have, um, openings even without, um, the possible results of the election, causing us not to have as many members, so, uh, we have one, two, four open positions, um, right now, three of them are corporate positions, so, uh, again, we do have some free names. Uh, I'm not saying them out loud enough, if you, there's one to know, certainly if you're on PEP, you'll be invited into the interviews as we go through that process to see what happens or, or what goes on, and then PEP committee usually recommends person going forward, um, usually it's a conflict of interest if you were already serving on another committee, um, then you couldn't serve on our board, right, so you couldn't serve on Board of Ed and the Library Committee at the same time. So, something like that would happen, or maybe their schedules, um, don't allow them to, uh, participate or what have you, so. That's usually what goes on, um, we try to be pretty upfront with the candidates in terms of what the expectations are for the board, uh, time-wise and, um, you know, activity-wise, and then see if they, uh, everything meshes and fits together. Then PEP usually brings it forward to the board, and the board will vote on, uh, approving them to become members. And that's only for the corporate positions, town positions are appointed by the town committees, they're either Republican or Democrat, whichever positions are open. Okay, there you go, that was the board positions, one oh one, quick summary for us. One of the things that we had on our activities calendar for this timeframe was the staff appreciation dinner. Now, we do that because we like our staff and we like to appreciate all the hard work, um, they do for us. And then when we looked at the calendar, we realized that they were so busy doing hard work for us, that they didn't have, uh, the time to meet with us yet, so we're gonna push that out towards, uh, the springtime. And they are, um, looking at, uh, some possible venues that they would like to go to or use or, or what have you, so more on that. Normally it is done in the fallish timeframe, but it has been pushed, uh, to springtime, a specific date yet to be determined. Uh, our meeting started tonight at seven, uh, we didn't have a pre-race meeting because it's early on in the season there, but, uh, we're gonna, we'll be doing that, typically we start those meetings in January, um, to come in a little bit earlier before our seven o'clock start, so. This month, November and December, start at seven with a regular board meeting, and there will be no pre-five K race meeting. I think that's it for activity calendar. We can talk about panel and stuff when we get down to that point. On the agenda. So we'll move right along to the treasurer's report with Leanne Mankey.
I sent out the treasurer's report for period ending September thirtieth. Balances on the TD checking unrestricted currently stands at ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars per few cents. That includes the receipt of the Wi-Fi outreach grant receipt for, uh, two years, basically servicing that, which usually falls under our budget, so this for the next two years that, that covers that, which is great. Um, TD money market, which is the restricted funds, is at fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Kingston, uh, the unrestricted fund account is at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents, and we are in the second or third month now of having the Hooker income transferred over, so that moves into the unrestricted. Investment account, uh, which is a combination of unrestricted and restricted funds, stands at four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And then George Hanell, uh, account is at four hundred and sixteen one thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. We have a, uh, the Margaret Hooker is currently at a balance of four hundred and twenty-five, seven fifty-five, eight four, with the baseline accessible, but we can do everything above that for it. Um, also, in the course of this month, the accounts, in the course of September, um, the accounts have been delivered to the accountant for preparation of our nine ninety to the IRS. They have the laptop and our records for fiscal year June thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-five, and I anticipate calling at the time to go and pick that up. The filing is due by the very fifteenth, so really be quick. So that'll be done. Uh, I do think, however, in the course of that, if anybody is interested, I do have a, a generalized sheet of, a breakdown of our restricted funds. If you would like one, you're welcome to take one, um, just, you can see where our breakdown is set to June thirtieth. Um, I did have an, uh, an adjustment I had to make for June thirtieth, because somewhere in the course of last year, I attributed something to restricted that should have been unrestricted or vice versa, for like sixty dollars and change, but, um, anyway, uh, so the balance has been set, and that's all that can be entered for the account. The other thing that I did do, and, um, executive council has received this, but it's primarily a generalized expense budget. Um, I don't have copies for you, but I did go through and, uh, go through what our basic expenses are, anticipated for fiscal year June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. The baseline that we have to earn to pay for things is eighteen-five, that we have to bring in. In addition to that, uh, we typically have the four thousand for the Wi-Fi, which will be funded by the grant this year, but typically that's in that number. Um, there's a couple of other things that, uh, we typically spend about for return fixtures, about another thousand, and we have current support, we put them there for the, wow, winter fest. But the big nut in there is the repairs and maintenance on the door, the Churchill door, now, we are receiving grants for that, but the work has to be done. And, um, whether it's funded grant-wise, some town monies, but our money, it's in the realm of fifty-five thousand dollars. And the sooner we do it, the better it will be, uh, it's deteriorating greatly, it's a lot of, uh, millwork. That as well as, um, the, uh, face sinker is, uh, put onto the brick, so that is something that we will be looking at, that we have to get taken care of, if we're gonna maintain in front of that, the Churchill door. So, uh, basically what we're looking at for this year for our basic expenses, if we were to front all of that, we're in the realm of sixty, seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars that we need to expect on unrestricted funds.
I agree, it's historical building renovation, too, right?
Pardon me?
That's historical.
Yes, and, and, and we are working with the grant committees to try and see what we can apply for, um, Joe Salam is working very closely with us to see if maybe they can find it, but when we're talking, if they have some town money, it's, it's not, it's going to be nowhere near like even a large chunk of that. So we, but if we're going to save that piece, and we, we have three different people come out and look at it, and they're all of the opinion, if we don't do something, it's literally just gonna fall off the world, uh, front of the building and it's not settled. So we have to do something in the short term. Um, the work probably would be next spring, would be as soon as we could get in there, because it's a five-year project. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for Leanne? Thank you, library director's report, Lisa Mastin.
Hi, hi, everyone, um. We, um, posted the assistant director's, um, position within the Teamsters Union, because it is a Teamsters Union physician, and there were no, um, applications, so now the position has been posted internally, um, within the town. And the, uh, closing date is, um, October twenty-ninth. And in November, we'll have, um, interviews with an outside panel for the first round. And then go from there after that. So it is becoming real now, um. First Sunday opening is, I'm sorry, I had it, I just had it, I'm sorry, uh, November ninth. And we'll be open through, um, early May after that, so we're getting staff ready for, um, just to have a good understanding of building, especially emergency procedures, because we're only open three hours, but a lot of the staff who work there on those days are part-time, with a few full times here and there. I am gonna be on the, I think I had mentioned this before, that I'm on the two hundred and fiftieth committee for the celebration of Declaration of Independence for, um, the town, so we're moving ahead with planning some events probably next spring, um, that are related to that topic, and, um, the, uh, senior center, Parks and Rec, and the library are working on the committee to come up with some events that we can offer at our different, um, departments during, um, the spring into June. So that's all I really have to say about that, um. The staff, um, all the children's staff and the teen librarians went into the schools in September during the open houses to promote library services, um, we hit all four elementary schools, both middle schools and the high school, so we're pretty happy about that. And the teen librarians are also in the, um, process of, um, bringing back the, uh, Newington High School, um, Teen Book Club, which we're pretty excited about, um, because that kind of went away, um, the last couple of years, just because of, um, interest, but, um, it looks like they're, they're able to start that up again. And, um, we're just getting, actually, we're kind of becoming consumed with the, all the Friends events that are coming up, so that's kind of been on our plate, the four, um, policy, we're gonna be talking about the policies tonight, but um, a lot of libraries, that's what we've been doing as well over the past few months, is getting our new policies in place and getting them to the state library for approval, so that everyone's in compliance by December first. And I guess that would be about it.
Thank you, any questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa, assistant library director's report, Karen Dunner.
Okay, um, Lisa's talking about personnel changes, we have a number coming up with our part-time positions. So I think I mentioned last month, and we had a part-time librarian, Alex Johnson, who was in circulation, she's left, she got a full-time job at Yale. So, uh, good for her, but what that has done is, it's kind of been a domino effect, which is really nice that we're able to do that, um, but, so, we have a sixteen-hour-a-week, uh, circulation technician, her name is Kim Fl- Flaherty, and she's moving into Alex's position, um, so she's going from sixteen to nineteen hours. Um, and then we have a, we have a sub- substitute, um, Abby Hinkley. She has been here, uh, maybe about six weeks, um, she's doing fabulous, and she's actually gonna be moving into the part-time, permanent part-time position of Kim's. So then what that leaves is now we have, will probably be looking for two circulation substitutes, um, we did have someone in circulation who was out for surgery for probably about three months, she just came back, which is, is great. Um, and then we have the pages, which I think we've talked about before, we had a number of pages who left for college, so we're in the midst of hiring for pages, um, we've had interviews, um, there are two people moving forward and possibly a third one. So that's what's happening with the part-time staff. Um, as Leanne mentioned, the, uh, the library received a grant from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving to fund the ten updated circulating hotspots for a two-year period, we're really excited about this. So that is great and very appreciative, uh, to be able to get these funds. And then, lastly, briefly, um, the town developed and sent out a social media policy. Um, it's the first time that they have done that, um, outlining guidelines for employees in their professional capacity, um, working for the town, but also a few things that pertain to all of us working here on our personal accounts as well. Um, so in general, I think just trying to make sure that everybody sort of understands kind of the do's and don'ts, um, people who are employed here, um, and are posting for the library have to be approved. And, um, the personal pages, there are things that maybe sound like common sense, but, um, you, you just never know, you know, you're not posting confidential information, if you're posting something about something going on in town, you need to include like a disclaimer, um, you know, saying this, you know, this is my position, it doesn't represent the town. And if you are creating social media accounts, uh, your personal accounts, you can't use your work email to set them up. Um, so, I think just in general, the policy was developed to make sure that people just have a better understanding overall of social media and how we should be using it. Um, Lisa, do you have anything to add to that?
Oh, I think it was just, um, just being a little bit more clarifying as to, um, departments that are using social media, um, and that they have certain standards now that we all have to follow, and then also for personal use, just, um, not telling you what you could say, but just clarifying some things that you can and cannot do because you are a town employee, so it's all good stuff.
Thank you. And that's it for me, thank you. Documenting common sense. All right, thank you, any other questions for Karen? Thank you, president of the library, Sheila Raul.
Um, hi, um, we're, um, kind of busy. Um, we, it was a reception this past weekend, um, for, you know, to try to uh, influence new people to join, um, that was very well received, and, um, I'm, I'm, I couldn't make it, but I understand that there were quite a few people there.
Over a hundred, right?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of, there were quite a few people there. Um, we, um, are looking at, um, the book sale, we still have this large donation of this quilting supply pieces. Um, and you can.
We just saw Leanne's antenna literally go off.
Yes. This is what we got.
All right, did you have somebody to go with that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, this, so, quilting. It's quilting, it's, someone, um, was donations from someone who was going into a assisted living situation.
In other words, you have somebody's quilting staff, which another quilter can appreciate.
Um, and, so this is all in the basement now, um, and we decided with it, this is not stuff that's gonna be selling at the book sale, because you're not gonna walk in, people that walk into the book sale, they're not gonna be looking for this specificity of stuff that's in there. Um, so we've set up for, um, November fifth, um, we're gonna have a pre-sale, and we talked to, um, the, the, um, quilting guild um, to let them know, um, that we'll be holding this sale, so it's from three to six. Um, they had talked, with them when we were talking before, they had talked about, um, half the market. Um, so that's what our prices are, um, for most, for most of the stuff.
The only other suggestion I would have is if, if he, those who aren't members of the quilting guild is potentially put out, uh, on Facebook an invitation to individual quilters to come to that, because what you have there is a lot of individually, uh, equipment that people use, seam referred, cutters, things like that, that people might want to purchase.
Yeah, that's, well, is, and, we, any way we can get the word out for this, because, um, um, you know.
But there are people who aren't in the quilting guild who are, you know, closet quilters.
I know, I know.
Like me.
Well, yeah.
She targeted that one properly.
I know.
Um, we're also getting ready for the, um, the book sale. Um, we have, um, additional, with, in addition to the, the quilting, um, we have, um, a puppet sale that's gonna be going on. What we don't sell at this, we will bring over to the book sale in case anybody wants it or take it, after that, we'll do something else with it, because, um, there's nobody that's going to, we'll have to see if there's other ways we can get to guilds or something to sell it. Uh, because it's, it's kind of too valuable to, to let go. Um, and November twenty-second, the book sale is the seventh to the ninth of November, and November twenty-second, we have a, um, craft fair for the first time, um, and at this point, um, as of two o'clock this afternoon, we have twenty-seven crafters who have signed up, um, to be present, so that would be a new interesting experience.
And they're selling their wares.
They're selling their wares, yes, we are, we are selling that space and they're selling their wares.
There's an invitation most right there. For your quilts.
Yeah.
Invitation was for your craft.
Yeah. Um, I've looked in the, I don't see a lot of quilters on the list, but.
No, but there are other stuff and things like that that you want.
Yeah. And we still have, we, there are still six bins of fabric downstairs, too.
Oh. Leanne, you're not allowed to do this immediately.
Often twice, we put hours down there pricing the stuff, so.
God bless you.
Um, yeah, they're, I'm getting sick of trying to measure how many yards in this, in these things, but, um, it's a lot of, and, um, Pat Smat, who is a quilter, um, has been working with, with me on this, and, um, she just gets really excited about.
Yes.
These little pieces of cloth, call it here, this is what I thought I wanted, so, okay. Um, so, um, that's all priced and ready to go, and that we will take over, if they don't sell, um, initially, we'll take that over to the book sale. Um, so, um, that's where we are right now.
So just so I have the dates, the book sale is the seventh to the ninth, but the quilt thing is November.
The quilting is the fifth, yeah, and it's gonna be here in this.
In this, yeah. What time is that?
Um, three to five.
And then the craft fair is November twenty-second.
Right.
Okay. Good. And that's all we're doing.
Just that's it.
I do have one request, and it's gonna be a joint request, I'll bring it up now, but, um, with Anna Eddy stepping off the board, she was the person from our board that did a lot of the dining partners um, re-up, and my understanding is the way the program works is every year about this time, um, it's a joint program with Friends and, uh, the board and the chef, lawyer, um, but you approach the, uh, restaurants that are on our list, or any new restaurants that are up there, and just say, you know, are you interested in supporting us again? To be on the dining partners list, there's a fifty-dollar, um, you know, gift card or fifty dollars worth of gift cards uh, that they need to give to the library and use it in Friends things and other things as it, as it goes through, some of those gift cards for the five K race and what have you, and then they can determine, um, you know, what they want, do they wanna discount a lot, or buy one, get one, or, or whatever it is in the dining partner, so we're gonna need somebody to help out and, um, go through, they've already been identified, um, you know, for one point, and then if we have somebody from Friends and somebody from the board, you know, it could be as easy as just going around to identify restaurants, and again, we've got a lot of new businesses coming in, so if there are some restaurants that you've been to and you thought, oh, maybe, we should do this, I can go through. Can't believe all the hands that just shot up in the air.
Diane, can I add to that, please?
Yes, please, do.
Okay, so, um, Michelle is the only one that's doing it now, and she just cannot do it by herself?
And both organizations benefit by the gift cards that we get, so it would be really helpful if we could get some people to help her because she just does not, she's got her, um, other stuff she has to do as well, so.
The real job.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that it's really hard for her to be the only one doing it, so.
Okay.
What is the timeframe for, uh, getting that complete?
What would be the time?
So the next dining partner is about to go out, so, um, I think they try to get the, um, do it by the end of the year. Um, try to get the people on board. Um, I could have whoever's interested, I could have Michelle reach out to you and give you all the specifics.
I, I have available, I have available capacity, um, you know, between now and the end of the year, if you want to pass the information over to her.
Great, sure. Absolutely. That'd be great, Jason. Thank you.
Yeah, when, um, when does she usually go out to, I guess?
She goes out during the day. She goes out during the day. The, the thing with restaurants is a lot of times it has to be after like eleven.
Yeah, okay.
Just because of their, unless it's like, um, a breakfast lunch place. But she would, yeah. No, she would be able to, but she goes whenever she can go.
Okay, I can coordinate with her on time.
That's wonderful.
I have, I have kids, you know, so I might have to catch them off of a bus and stuff like that, but.
That's why, no, whatever, it's really your own schedule. Whatever works for you would be great.
And coordinate, so, because we don't want everybody to start, we don't want three people working on it and starting at the top of the list each time, right?
Yeah.
I, I just talked to. No, uh, Michelle Roy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
I'll, I'll give her information to you, Jason, okay?
Yeah, likewise. Okay, yeah, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, that'd be a great help.
Okay, so, um, that's Friends and, uh, Dining Partner, Joint Committee. All right. Any other thoughts or questions for Friends? No? All right, committee reports. Uh, budget.
As far as I know, it hasn't come in, has it yet, Lisa?
We haven't gotten any requests.
It should come to December and then.
That's not till November. Won't be till November.
November, December, then they want it right after the first of the year.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's usually due around the, um, third or fourth of January.
All right, good. Uh, next up is Pep, Planning Evaluation and Policy. Polly?
Hey, um, Lisa sent all of you guys the, um, um, the policies that the State Library reviewed and approved.
Thank you, Bernard. Um, uh, has anyone had any questions about it? And the other thing was the, the final policy for the, um, the board, the person who is, I'm, I'm so tired right now, it's not nice. Um, there is the, likely, there is, that's, we finally did a little tweaking. It's, it's done and and we had gotten approval from the last meeting that once the tweaking got done was approved. So that was, that was the only thing that we really had to worry about. Lisa was the one doing all the work, uh, for the, the, uh, uh, the changes for the State Library. But it's basically to, to codify procedures for the whole state, for every library, um, that if someone comes in, um, requesting information about material that we have here, units, um, books, media, um, art, artwork, anything that
Programs.
Yes, that anyone might have, that, um, he, Lisa went through it and then we reviewed her, her, uh, proposal. And then she sent it to the State Library. They reviewed, reviewed it and she did that. And we've got, guys all got copies.
Do you want individual motions or can they be copied as a group?
I would like it as a group unless you saw something glaring in, in a particular one, because all of this is red and over to.
It might, it might be better to, um, do it individually so that the, um, I have to send the minutes to the State Library.
All right.
So if you list the titles of each policy that you approved.
And you also want one for the reconsideration form as well?
Right.
Okay, so five, five separate motions.
Sorry.
I'll start off with a recommendation that we approved, the programming policy. Canvas. I'll send it.
Any questions on the policy? No? All those in favor? Say that.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Second one?
Well, that was programming, right?
Programming.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the material review and reconsideration policy.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Since I'm not a role, I'll make a motion to accept the display policy.
I'll follow that.
Thank you, George. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
We need to do the, and I'll make a motion to do the material selection policy.
Second. Okay. Did you pick one of those seconds? All right.
Somebody else want to leave off?
Any discussion?
Consideration for.
Wait, wait, we gotta do the vote. That's not racist. Um, any discussion? Maureen?
What about the emeritus? Did we vote on that the last?
We did vote on that the last time. So we're still on this, but stay on this one. So, uh, we're at material selection policy. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
And, uh, acceptance of the statement, the revised statement of concern about library materials events or displays reconsideration form.
Second. He am second in the session. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, um, passes unanimously. Thank you. Did we need the form of her?
That was the last one.
That was the last one.
Mm-hmm. And those of you that are, Pep, I'll contact you this week. Please try to find the date or dates available to, uh, to interviews for the, um, three potential. And keep our fingers crossed. And do you have the information, like the?
Their names and phone numbers, yeah.
Their names and phone numbers, great, because I know there were three people.
Yeah.
But also like expectations of a board member and maybe some.
And if anyone has anything to point about, I have the form, I can send it to the Pep.
Wait, and then weren't there some basic questions that we put together just to, like, warm-up questions?
Yeah.
And if you had other questions for folks.
And that will go out to Pep committee before.
And you have three potential.
Right.
Corporate.
Oh. They've come, they've come from, um, different folks or, you know, they approached us or, or were approached by different folks. So for those of you that went out recruiting, thank you. Uh, it's always appreciated. Okay, um, anything else for Pep?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Investment, Kelly DeHus.
So Kingston and the markets have all been working in our favor. We're doing pretty well. Um, as Leanne mentioned, if you're looking at the breakdown for the Hooker portfolio, you will start to see the transfers out shown as a negative balance on there. That is the net income. It is set to move over every month. I do not separately track the cash account, but you can see it on Leanne's treasurer report as a receipt into that unrestricted fund treasurer account, the cash account. So that was the only thing. I don't want to show a negative here and then have no capture on the other end, but Leanne's report does capture that every month.
You make a good team.
Perfection.
So basically, that's how, that's how we protect the, the original capital and have the earnings of spending.
Yes, so in August was the first month that that began, so it looks like a very large distribution out of there, but that was a community income, um, back from January all the way through that August history.
As we were setting things up.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Anything else? Any questions for Pep? Thank you. House Committee, uh, Diane Stamp. So, uh, the annual walkthrough is coming up. We usually do that in November. Lisa, were you able to, um, narrow in on a date that works for staff to do this?
Yes, we, we'd like to do it on, um, November eighth, starting at eight-thirty.
So November eighth, which is a Saturday, which is the Saturday of the book sale, um, starting at eight-thirty. And then we can, um, walk through and do that. Is there anyone here who has not been on a, a walkthrough before with us when we do this? Okay. So, um, I open it up to the whole board. Anybody who is interested and available to be there, to be here at eight-thirty. Library itself doesn't open until ten, so we try to get in and, and get through quickly, or at least the public areas quickly before the library would open. Seeing as it's a book sale day, um, you know, so in and out as quickly as we can. Um, and that's where we make our list of things, inside and outside the building, of what looks like it's holding up okay, what looks like it needs refurbishment, and then, um, we go through the quoting and, and pricing stage of that. Um, that's it for the annual walkthrough. I don't know if that's a, a hard stop for anybody. I'll tell you quite frankly, you know, we need one or two people from House. I'll be there. We need the staff, uh, representation to be there to take notes and let us in and out of all the rooms and maybe give us an idea of what's happening with the facility stuff. So, good with that? Leave that there. Um, we are closer and closer to getting curtains for this room, uh, I understand.
Now that I don't have a wedding and I'm living in floral hell, now I can go back to being clever. Yeah, I have, I have the, the
Materials.
Material. I have the, um, brackets. I just have to, um, get it done, get it done now.
Okay.
Great. And then Facilities has to put it back up. We can't put it up and down. We can't move it.
Yeah, it's okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, and that's, that's where we get our, in the walkthrough, that's where we get our usual checklist, uh, that we set up. Right, any other questions for House? No? Then we'll move on to Facility Insight with Christopher Riley.
All right, um, we're keeping ourselves busy with various meetings. Got more meetings coming up, but, um, one of the meetings we had was we met with the architect and a construction firm just to get a updated cost estimate um, for the library. I figured, you know, it's been, they had been a couple of years, so, um, we wanted to get an updated cost estimate for that. And after that discussion, we've also, um, are working with them to work on options for, uh, cost reductions. Um, because, uh, obviously, as, as you know, material costs, everything's, you know, gone, been going up. So we're looking for ways to still meet our needs for the conceptual design, but all, um, but also trying to look for areas that we may be able to, to, to reduce from. And, um, we're supposed to get more information from them, uh, once they have that. Um, we also met with Lark and provided them, uh, we had gotten a quote from the architect, uh, for the continued support of our meetings. Um, and, uh, so we met with Lark, um, the meeting with Lark, I believe there's a meeting this Thursday. Um, and that, that one, I believe, is when we're going to vote for the, um, uh, for the Lark funding, uh, for, for, for the quote. Last time I provided too short notice, I guess, right before the meeting, so. Um, so now that it's been out there, we're, we're expected to vote on it in this upcoming week. Um, and, uh, during the Lark meeting, they had mentioned about, uh, planning for presenting the Town Council again early next year. Um, we kind of wanted to get our ducks in a row of, uh, finding out what options architects and the construction firm can help us come out with so that we have some of the, um, better it bill to present. Um, as Leanne had, uh, talked about before too, when it refers to Churchill Door, and I think we've been in discussions with the Town Grant Rider. Uh, we've been having regular meetings with them. They are very helpful, trying to locate various grants that are, you know, specific to libraries, uh, you know, some may be too specific of use in some cases, but we're looking at all our options, um. We're looking, uh, we were looking specifically in the short term for the Churchill Door, um, that's a major one. Um, but also for the electronic signage, um, out, uh, out from the library itself. Um, and we've also been, um, starting discussions with them as well as what would be needed for the State Library grant. Uh, we had mentioned that we had the structural engineering report, um, and for the library, which is one of the steps. But we had, you know, various other questions about other requirements as they've been coming up for the library grant. Um, and one of the other things at the grant meetings, uh, they're also, we're looking into, you know, you know, potential for us to develop some, uh, they call them one-pagers, just to, you know, look for sponsorship, you know, potential sponsorship activities as another, uh, possible funding avenue as well, so. And, um, as I mentioned, we're, we're having upcoming meetings where, um, uh, George and I, um, have a, a plan of meeting tomorrow with the, um, social media, um, Michelle from, uh, the library to, uh, kind of discuss about videos. That was one of the things we brought at our joint facility communications meeting. Um, and as I said, March is this Thursday, we're having, continuing discussions with the architect and the construction firm to finalize, you know, what potential options we may have, so.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone have questions for Chris? Okay. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work and you're keeping it moving forward, so appreciate it and appreciate the rest of the people on the team. Welcome to that. Um, Fund Development, again, usually that's, um, Anna at this point. That would be a position in the, um, committee assignments that we'd be looking to fill in and maybe have some folks help out along the way, whether it's writing an updated letter to put in with the footprints. Um, we do have the, the network and the framework for giving. It's up on the website. We have a way to accept monies and go through that and, and do it. Um, Anna kept it alive and in front of people, so, um, that might be something that we're looking at, uh, for folks to do or help run as we move forward. And we won't talk about all the other unnamed jobs that Anna did yet in terms of the race and, and stuff like that, but, um, again, that would be something that, uh, we would look at, whether it's flyers for, um, the Friends Footprints. We do an insert, was it four times a year? We did that. And so somebody to break that up or, or come up with the ideas for that. Um, nominations, Maureen?
Uh, nothing at this point.
And then communications, George?
As Chris said, we're going to be with Michelle Patnog.
Patnog.
We have tomorrow, talk about the, um, video to kind of present what the library has to offer and then helping the library do much more. That's what we discussed through, you know, tomorrow. Um, and then we're planning on meeting in, uh, October thirtieth. We'll talk about, um, a joint, uh, we call it a joint, a meeting between the facility and us. We're trying to find out outlets for the library to present an assigned community member, members to pursue scheduling better outlets and um, we're analyzing a concise pitch we can tailor for different audiences. So that's what we're going to talk about at our upcoming meeting.
Hey, any questions for George? Moving on to old business. Staff Appreciation Dinner, I mentioned during our activities that, that's now, um, scheduled scheduled for spring of twenty-twenty-six, so, um, as we hear about things or know more things that come forward, um, we'll run to the meeting so we can vote on them and figure out what's happening. Um, open board positions, we spoke about that a little bit. Um, Pep has three people to interview. We do have three corporate positions open. And we have one town position and we may even be getting a few more town positions open, uh, but we won't know until November, so keep good thoughts. And then, um, I don't have anything for new business.
Oh, I have a question on your whole business and my apologies, I was not present at the HANIL.
Oh, sorry, yes.
How did, how did it go?
The HANIL went well. We had a, a lot of people here. Um, we had, um, board members come to volunteer. Some had to come early and leave early. Some stayed throughout the, the whole event as that worked through. Um, Peter, one of the folks in the duo was a local and I guess, um, his, his, uh, yeah, it, it was kind of a high school year.
I rode the chopper for him.
Right, well, that, that's it.
But all his friends from high school.
But they came to see him, so, um, there was a little bit of the old home week, uh, going on, so many of the people that approached also chit-chatted with each other during the breaks and, and stuff like that. And our next HANIL event, that's the other thing I should, our next HANIL event is December fifth.
Yeah.
December fifth, and that's the Jukebox fifties and sixties. So that'll probably be fun and upbeat, and I think. So that'll probably be fun and upbeat. And I think they're gonna, um, put in a, a few pieces of.
Yeah, they'll do a little holiday music, but it won't be holiday centric.
Right.
We're in what?
Probably December fifth.
Yeah.
And, um, there's another point that, uh, Anna was part of. So I'll, I'll just go back to committees again. So Anna also would reach out and look for acts or people or, or things. Um, and I think she did a lot of that just because she's such a social person.
She's still sending the emails.
But so can any of us. So if you go somewhere, you see something, you've, um, interacted with, you know, someone that you think would qualify as a cultural event. And so we've had a lot of music. And there's nothing wrong with that. But if you go someplace and you're like, oh, wow, I wonder if we could do this. I wonder if this goes under HANAL. We actually had a person come here once and they talked about the history of books and then we had like a little arts and crafts bookmaking. So it doesn't always have to be music is my point.
Gina Bereko was huge.
I mean.
She was here for our annual. Yeah, but, but she was under the HANAL auspices.
Yeah, well, there's no other way to afford it. But, um, so, uh, it could be, it could be a speaker. It needs to be culturally relevant, right? Because that's what the HANAL endowment is, uh, for that. We had, um, an improv company come once and we kind of did like the clue game. And that was nice because it got people to move around in the library and see different things that maybe they don't normally see. You know, maybe you always come in and go to the staffs or maybe you always go to the quiet reading room and you don't know what else is going on in the different areas. So again, if you see something, say something. You know, if you hear somebody that's out there and good, say something and, and we'll bring them in. You know, we have two events a year. Sometimes the schedules work for us. Sometimes they don't. Depends on what's happening. We've got, um, you know, Winterfest coming up. We've got book sales, races, things like that. We try to work around, um, summer and winter reading programs. So bring your name forward and then we'll try to work with them. And if it's not a twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six kind of thing, maybe it's a twenty seven or twenty eight. That's okay. You know, it's nice to have names and ideas for people that we can work with going forward.
And with HANAL, I mean, it's at least two that we need to do.
Every.
But we can do more. Depending on.
We actually have.
Schedule.
Here because we did a children's program this year that fell into the HANAL aspect.
Yeah. And then for our seventy fifth?
Eightieth.
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 Eight. That's a little heavy, but, um, but it doesn't have to just be two. It's something interesting.
So the thought is that, um, you know, according to the endowment that we got request was that we do two events a year. So we do two. Music is fine. Doesn't have to be music. If you come across something else and, um, you think it, it could possibly fit into that. Um, yeah, bring it up. Let's talk about it. Let's do it. And then the one other thing that I wanted to talk about is, um, our friends' schedule. So the friends' meetings are always on Wednesdays, right? The second Wednesday. So it usually follows our Monday meetings, but not in October. Um, and usually we have a different board member attend the different meetings throughout. So it's not, you would go to maybe one or two meetings in a year, not every meeting. You're welcome to go to every meeting, as many meetings as you want. But between our committee meetings and our personal lives and our kids' lives and everything else, sometimes it gets to be hard. But it's nice if, um, we have a couple of people that want to sit in. What's really nice is, as Julie does here, she tells us what's going on with Brownfall. We just tell them a little bit of what's going on with us. And for those of us with short-term memories, it's really easy because we just had a meeting two days ago. So that's usually how it goes. So if you have any interest in that, um, let us know. Christine Chushen has been very good about trying to keep that together and go through and, and him. And, uh, I go to a couple of them, you know, for years it goes through. So.
What time are the meetings there?
Six o'clock now, right?
Six.
That's hard. Sunny, that's hard. For me.
And you meet here?
Yeah, we meet here at six o'clock and, uh, the second Wednesday of every month. We'll have a schedule. Go through that.
I think we, I mean, that's. That's okay. It's sort of awesome.
That's all right. It, it happens. Um, so that's it unless somebody else has something that they want to bring up on there.
I would just like to, to bring up the, um, knowledge of Abe's contribution to as a town liaison.
That's right.
Since, uh, I believe this will be the last meeting in that capacity. So, um, just want to appreciate all your support that you've, you've given to the library over.
Thank you. So.
Been doing a long, a few time.
Well, for the time being, uh, but I still, a little side note. I am the president of the Historical Society at the moment, and some of you may know. We're looking for a new administrative manager. It's a part-time paid job. And, uh, we all look for volunteers, but it's hard finding part-time paid staff. So, um, our pre, our present one has had the position for twenty-five years. So it'll be time to move on. It's, we on, um, and you can get, there will be flyers up. There will be thing in the local papers. Or you can contact, uh, Historical Society office. They have office hours on Monday morning, Wednesday afternoons and Friday mornings. The building's not open, but there is someone there from the staff if anyone is interested.
Okay. David, just want to echo what Chris said. I mean, Dave has been on this board as long as anybody as a liaison, except for the time that he was actually on the board as a board member. Many, many years. Dave, Dave has, um, been one of the voices in town that speaks to support the library and appreciate that. It's, uh, it's very important as we all know, we go through. So.
The other place we, we're, we're gonna lose in is he's on Lark. As the town council appointment. So as a Republican liaison or appointment from, from the, uh, to Lark, so.
Well, I was reminded, we have one on the twentieth, I believe.
And, um, here's another pitch. Just because you're not an official board member, doesn't mean that you can't still come out and hang with us no matter, uh, you know, what the positions are. We're always looking for assistance, um, whether it be with dining partners or race day or, um, anything else like that.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Are we that transparent?
I'm a beginning.
So if, if, um, you've been here and, and even, you know, whatever happens and you're not here going forward, you're always welcome to come and help and, and volunteer and do things. Don't, don't feel that because you're not on the board. It's, um.
I appreciate that.
You're not welcome. So.
Friends have their ears open for you too.
Did anybody check on the time?
Seven fifty-six.
Oh, no, I don't like your watch. Wow, your watch is correct. That one's a little slow. So, um, any other public participation? Anything online? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Christine and Chris, defer.
Diane, congratulations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Lisa.
Karen, do you have information on Jukebox forty-five? I talked to him. Recently?
Yeah.
Oh. He's so personable and, and he and another fellow already came and looked at the, uh, physically, because they noticed they're heading into. When is your actual?